All right, I'm Eugene Driscoll of ValleyIndy.org and I am stream sniping this evening's Derby Board of Aldermen meeting. Looked at the agenda, it looks pretty uneventful, but we shall see. Just want to share this, let people know I'm live on Facebook, do it only on YouTube, trying to build the YouTube page.
This meeting is being recorded.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome the members to the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen, all the women, Thursday, November 13th, 2025. Can we please stand for the pledge? And the time is now 7:01.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Newberg.
Here.
Ms. Petinici.
Here.
Ms. Fedomski.
Here and almost there.
Ms. Benioz Perez.
Here.
Mrs. Perez.
Here.
So, here. Mr. Chevarella.
Excuse.
Ms. Valchoni Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hyder.
Here.
Okay, the record should reflect that you have eight members present, so you have a quorum.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Number four additions, lesions, corrections, and adoption of the agenda. I have none, Mr. President, you have any?
None.
None, okay, hearing that. Number five, public portion. Anybody from the public like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. You know who I am.
Say it.
George Kretica.
Address.
Milwaukee Avenue Derby.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Tonight. I have a little speech there. No, I'm not kidding. So tonight, one of our honored aldermen, this is her last meeting. And we're gonna miss her. And, but she brought her little daughter, we probably could fill in for in about 20 something years. So, on behalf of the city and the Board of Aldermen, come on up, Jess. So, we have a certificate of appreciation, Jessica Berrios Perez. The certificate is awarded to Jessica Berrios Perez in recognition of her position on the Derby Board of Aldermen, Alderwomen's Second War City Derby dated today, November 13th, 2025, signed by our lecherous mayor, Joseph DiMartino. Thank you. We appreciate everything what you did. And here's a little something for you and the baby and we're gonna miss you.
Oh, thank you, guys. I'm getting emotional. I'm really proud I was able to be part of the team for two years. It was a wonderful experience and hopefully I'll be back one of these future years. But thank you for your support and I am happy to see you guys all after three months. And for today, it's Emilia's first meeting, so hopefully in the future she'll be part as Derby, our town, our loving home. Derby has been my home for many years and it's gonna continue being my home. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jess, thank you for everything. I'd like to thank everybody for Sarah. For the bakery, the food, we have a little thing after for people to indulge.
Anybody else in the public like to speak? Come on up. Hit the button, there you go, you're good.
Well, um, Frederick Karowski, 216 Derby Ave, Derby, Connecticut. I wanted to say congratulations on your victory. Even though I'm a Republican, you're all, you know, we are all people, politics is local, you're, you know, friends. But anyway, also, thank you for clearing up some of the mayhem, Academy Hill Road, no, David Humphries Road, you sorry, I'm a little out of my way in here. David Humphries Road, you raised the sewer. Demand holes. Thank you. It was a little late because my exhaust system got torn off on my car. I got a $3,000 estimate and my wife has been patient while I've been fixing my, fixing my car. Also, with regards to the reevaluation in Derby. You know, we know our property values are gonna be going up. So, you know, please. You know, be, you know, look at the rates, the mill rates and everything else, so our taxes don't go up dramatically. Just a little worry of mine that my house is gonna be worth a lot more money. And if the rates don't go down proportionately to the assessment of my house, I'm gonna be digging deeper yet again and a double-digit tax increase, whether if it comes from the rate or if it comes from the evaluation, will definitely hurt. So that's also one of my concerns. And also, the Main Street looks beautiful, but once when those plows start hitting those bricks. You know, we might see things getting torn up. I mean, it's looking good right now, but the reality is, let's have some spare materials to make repairs quickly and keep our downtown beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Anyone else in the public like to speak? Third and final time, anybody else in the public like to speak? Hearing none, public portion is now closed. Six, administrative in appointments, approval minutes, no action, 6.2. Move to approve monthly tax refunds in the amount of $2,728.91, dated November 12th, 2025. We have a motion.
So moved.
Made by Ron, is there a second?
Second, Amy.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. 6.3, appointments to boards and commissions, 6.3.1, Regional Water Authority. Move to approve the appointment of Stephen Iacone as Derby's representative to the Regional Water Authority as recommended by Mayor Joseph DiMartino. Do I have any motion?
So moved.
Made by George, is there a second? Second by Rob. Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Motion carries. 6.3.2, City Naming Commission, move to approve the appointment of the following as at-large members of the City Naming Commission as recommended by Mayor Joseph DiMartino, Randall, Randy Ritter, and John J. Jack Walsh. Do I have a motion? Made by George, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Sarah, welcome. Seven, committee reports and recommendations. There were no action for all three. Number eight, new business, 8.1, blight list, 860 Baldwin Road. Move to add 860 Baldwin Road to the blight list. Do I have a motion? Made by Ron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. 8.2, EMS agreement, move to approve the local emergency medical services plan prepared by the Storms Ambulance and Rescue Corps. Revised to October 2025 and dated stamped November 12th, 2025. And authorize Mayor Joseph DiMartino to execute and document on behalf of the City of Derby. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And made by Amy, is there a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion?
One question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How long is this for?
Five years.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, nine, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, geez, I almost forgot Sarah. Going out of myself. 8.3, Whittick Park Floral Beautification. Move to authorize Alderwoman Sarah Wodamski to create a floral beautification and planting project at the exterior of Whittick Park along Academy Hill Road and Sentinel Hill Road in consultation with the Director of Public Works. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by George, is there a second?
Second.
Robin? Any discussion?
Uh, just really quickly, so, um, you know, Rob Hyder has had started this great adopt a stop, adopt a spot program a few years ago. Last year around this time, we planted tulips and daffodils down at the bottom of the Academy Hill Green. It got a lot of positive responses, just simple flowers making people happy. And driving by Whittick Park the other day and seeing that hill on either side of the spillway is where I'd like to start. See how the tulips and daffodils take in the spring and then continue on and really make the front of that, you know, beautiful asset we have in Derby even more beautiful and put some smiles on people's faces and just have a sense of community pride. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a wonderful idea, Sarah, and I commend you for taking this on, so thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Pose. Motion carries. Sorry, nine, 9.1.1, resend action on agenda. Item 8.4 of the July 10th, 2025 regular meeting. Move to resend the following motion approved by the Board of Aldermen, all the women on July 10th, 2025. Move to authorize removal of restriction prohibiting access to a participant's own personal funds prior to retirement. Specifically excluding any of City of Derby funds. Do I have a motion?
Uh-oh.
Made by Ron, is there a second?
Second, Sarah.
Second by Sarah, any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Motion carries. 9.1.2, corrected action for empower retirement 457 savings plan. Move to authorize participants in the empower retirement 457 savings plan to take loans against their own personal contributions prior to retirement. This authorization explicitly excludes any funds contributed by the City of Derby. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Made by George, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Motion carries. Number 10, executive session, discussion of communication from Corporation Council. I need a motion to go into executive session and invite Corporation Council and that's it.
And the town clerk for a portion.
And the town clerk for a portion. Do I have a motion?
So.
Made by Ron, is there a second? Second by Robin. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Time is now, I'm sorry, 7:13.
So for the people who are on Zoom, we're gonna pause the recording and put you in the waiting room and then when the executive session is over, we'll bring you back in.
Been going outside if you want.
Yeah, go on.
The recording has stopped.
Yeah, so this is Eugene Driscoll of ValleyIndy.org, very quick Board of Aldermen meeting in the City of Derby this evening. They ran through that agenda, wasn't much discussion of what they were talking about, a little hard for the public to keep track. They went into executive session without stating a reason. As I said in the comments, the agenda for this meeting lists the executive session reason as, quote, "discussion of communication for Corporation Council," which could mean anything. Usually, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna say that's a violation of the FOI Act, but in terms of the spirit of transparency, an apple pie in the New York Yankees, it doesn't quite meet the sniff test. Is it a personnel matter? Is it a lawsuit? Is it a real estate deal? If it is a personnel matter, was the employee given a chance to have it in public, et cetera, et cetera. Probably not worth sticking around if you're watching this from home, because I don't know if they're gonna take action, or maybe after the meeting, after the executive session, which is closed door, secret. They could possibly reveal more, but again, you're supposed to say why you're going into executive session. That was not done. There's only three people watching this. I'm gonna share, while they're in executive session, I'll keep an eye on that screen. I'm gonna share. Derby high schoolers were on WTNH three weeks ago, doing some good, so let's have a watch. Don't report me to WTNH for sharing this. Sorry, let me do that again.
...and we were overwhelmed 23.
Gonna love this one. Joining together, tying blankets, crafting a project for a child who really needs it. Get ready to feel inspired by a group of high schoolers this morning. We're heading to Derby in What's Right With Schools. The fabric is soft. And the patterns are bright.
There's a whole range from Star Wars to puppy dogs to flowers and everything in between, so lots of fun.
These are cozy blankets coming together and they'll soon be comforting someone special.
We put out a call to action for our kids to say anyone interested and we were overwhelmed, 23 kids signed up right away to be able to come in and, you know, tie blankets today.
Getting to know that these kids are getting like a warm hug at night, maybe if they fell down or anything, this could bring them up.
Derby high school students helping out the blanket fairy.
Nice and comfy and warm.
Who we've done stories with, providing blankets to kids who need the most, abused, in foster care, or needing comfort.
The whole idea is to give a hug to kids who need a hug, to show that they've been loved.
Salford Falls Quilters here to help the students.
It's actually a really simple project. Two big pieces of fleece fabric cut along the edges and then you tie them together. You don't have to think about it much, which gives you more opportunity to chat with the people you're sitting with.
Since the school is so small, like we don't offer it, we don't.
It's very nice to have multi-generational activity.
Does the school have a program where you can do an independent study?
And to have involvement with community at different age levels and in different settings, and this is one way.
School hours spent crafting something special, making friends and learning a new skill.
It's easy, it was, I've never made a blanket ever, but I learned today and I'm actually adapting really well to it. I already made three so far.
Altogether, dozens of blankets finished and ready for a child to love, making a difference in someone's life.
Especially how soft these blankets are, it like kind of is like a warm hug to these kids.
It's What's Right With Schools. In Derby, Laura Hutchinson, News 8.
Thought that was a nice story. Let's go back to check on the Derby Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen. Not back yet. Just looking at YouTube here, the Pizzeria Raccoon story has seemed to die down rather quickly. Thank the Lord. Only a few videos from today, you have the TV news repackaging their content to get that all-powerful YouTube short money. Take a look at one of these.
Lila didn't know how to be anything but Lila. I had her from, she was tiny, so I bottle fed her and then I fed her baby food.
Cheryl Barton and her son Richard are still processing what happened to them just weeks ago. A raccoon they had for months named Lila, taken from them by officers with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection after an anonymous tip.
I just didn't want her to die.
Cheryl says she found Lila left alone. She knew she wouldn't make it, but after a while, she became a pet.
There was a nice cage set up.
Kept in this enclosure in the back of the family restaurant, Bartonza Pizza.
Outside the entire time, never, never stepped foot in this restaurant. And the health department came and we passed with flying colors.
Deep says that Lila is now in the care of a wildlife rehabilitator to get her used to the wild and release her when she's ready. It is illegal in the state of Connecticut to own a pet raccoon.
Baby wild animal, they're cute and adorable and you love them, but the thing is, they are a wild animal and they have wild instincts.
Lila didn't know how to be anything but Lila. I had her.
So that was that, let's go back to older men and women are still not back, could be a long executive session. What they're talking about, I can't tell you because I don't know, because they didn't give the slightest hint when they went in. So, uh, we wait, we continue to wait. Now Derby Police put out a press release, well, not really a press release, a Facebook release, because no one sends the media releases anymore. They take photos of pieces of paper and put it online, but Zaza Smoke Shop there on, uh, Pershing Drive. A nineteen-year-old employee was arrested, charged with operating a drug factory, packaging and selling cannabis. Joint investigation between Derby PD, the Department of Consumer Protection, forty-nine Pershing Drive, allegations of illegal sales of cannabis were received. Initial execution of the investigation implies maybe they had a warrant. Led to discovery and seizure of five point seven pounds of cannabis, thirty-eight point seven pounds of cannabis-related products. The nineteen-year-old was the sole employee working there. Claimed, claimed he was a new employee, no knowledge that the product was illegal. Store was closed. Then there was this note at the door saying it would open at six PM and at seven PM. The nineteen-year-old returned to the store with two bags. Turned out to be allegedly almost eleven pounds of cannabis and four pounds of cannabis-related products. Zaza Smoke Shop has previously been found to be operating in violation of cannabis laws. Not authorized to manufacture or sell cannabis. They charged the employee with operating a drug factory, possession with intent, intent to sell two counts and possession of cannabis. I wonder if they go after the owner. All right, I'm getting a little tired of waiting around. I gotta be honest with you. Think I'm gonna end this and, uh, try to figure out the mystery behind the sketchy executive session later. Peace.